I'm going to call the meeting to order. So let's start with our call to order.
Aaron Karan?
Here.
Lisa Ramon?
Here.
John Mastin?
Here.
Kyle Niederman?
Here.
Let's have a moment of silent prayer and private reflection. Will you all join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? Hi.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, a sincere republic for which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next up is a possible motion for executive session. Do we see any need for executive session?
I don't see a need for one.
Yes. Then we'll move on to spotlights and recognition. Student services, the I Can Do It Awards.
Thank you. In partnership with the Arizona Council for Exceptional Children, Lake Havasou Unified School District, which wishes to recognize students within our district who have demonstrated an I Can Do It attitude. Students are recognized for excelling despite any challenges in academics, arts, athletics, community service, employment, self-advocacy, technology, or independent life skills. This award recognizes and acknowledges the determination of a student to succeed and many times the family that supports them as well. Tonight, I'd like to invite a few administrators up to recognize a student from their school and that student's family for all the excellence they do. Students that are awarded the local I Can Do It Award are nominated for the Arizona CEC State Award as well. We'll start with Thunderbolt Middle School and Mrs. Neal.
Is Thomas here today? You want to come on up here? I am so excited to tell you about this student. Come on and stand next to me and face the audience. I'll tell you what I wrote. This was a team decision. Every day that he shows up to school, he is an example to others. He does his best work all the time and is a great example of working hard. He's respectful and kind to everyone he encounters and makes our school and our classroom a better place. He has good relationships with the students, the teachers. He's always willing to try new things, even in PE. He has a positive, great attitude, a can-do attitude, and we thought of him when, with the I Can Do It Award. Thomas Milligan.
While we're waiting, thank you all for joining us again. I really do appreciate it, the board and our staff does as well. And really, the work you do at home is so critical to the success of all of the students here and for our students. Everyone in this room is so proud of all of the work you do. Thank you for day in, day out, trying your best. While I do have a captive audience, I'll plug something new we've started this year. So this year, we have started what's called the Special Education Advisory Council. Once a month, we meet here at the district office. It's normally the third Tuesday of the month, right before the governing board meeting, but we've changed it. So you can look for information about that, and it's a great time just to meet and learn about things going on. Let's go ahead to Nautilus with Mrs. Williams. Thank you, guys.
Okay. So Nautilus Elementary School, the teachers and the staff recommended and voted for Elena Pacula. She is a role model for demonstrating perseverance and effort. She is an all-around great student. She is kind, safe, and responsible, and she is respectful at all times. She always tries her best, and when she finds something difficult, she advocates for herself and then she, I'm sorry, she advocates for help and shows persistence through difficult tasks. Due to her willingness to learn and attention to instruction, she always makes progress and shows growth in all academic areas. She is kind and helpful to others and appears to enjoy helping others be successful as well. Elena's hard work and can-do attitude show in everything she does. Congratulations, Elena Pacula. Congratulations. There you go.
Up next, we'd like to invite Mrs. Hammer from Havasou High Elementary.
Good evening and welcome. I would like to let you know a little bit about our friend, Nico Diaz. We would like to nominate Nico Diaz for the I Can Do Award. Nico is a nine-year-old in our third grade and is currently excelling in the area of math. We've seen it firsthand. Despite a history of challenges in this area, Nico is in the top three of his class in this area. Nico also participates in extracurricular activities. He plays the positions of linebacker and running back during the football season. He plays the position of catcher during the baseball season. Nico's motivation to do well in school is to reach his career goal of being a doctor. When asked why he is aspiring to be a doctor, he says, "I just really like helping people, and I want to be on a billboard someday." Nico demonstrates integrity throughout the day. For example, during a chat alone with his teacher, the announcements came over the loudspeaker to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Nico stopped the conversation in midstream, stood up, and pledged to the flag with no prompt from his teacher or peers for participation. If you know Nico, his parents probably can help me out. He talks all the time, right? He also asked, "What makes you so great?" He said, "My mom. She's always there to help me when I am down." Congratulations, Nico.
From Oro Grande Elementary, tonight, we'd like to recognize Serenity. Serenity has an I Can Do It attitude in all she does. Despite Serenity's diverse needs, she stays positive and puts forth 100% effort. She is a great student and a great friend. She consistently has a pep in her step, and her smile on her face is always exciting. It has been incredible to watch her make the progress she has made while attending Oro Grande Classical Academy, and Mr. Bitterman and the entire staff are so proud of her. Congratulations, Serenity. We'd like to invite Ms. Black from Jamaica Elementary.
Good evening. Brooklyn, can you come on up? At Jamaica Elementary, we have Brooklyn Maltoes. Brooklyn is a motivated and hard-working student. She utilizes strategies to help her succeed and does not shy away from her hard work. Her reading skills have continued to improve due to her effort. She has never given up and uses strategies to help her in her own learning process. Brooklyn engages in instruction and is able to ask for help when needed. She has shown leadership as well. She participates in student council. Brooklyn sets goals for herself, and she works very hard to achieve them. Congratulations, Brooklyn.
Next, we'd like to invite Mrs. Sotner from Starline Elementary.
Good evening. I'd like to invite Jade Sorry to come up. So at Starline, we discussed with the special education teachers on our campus, and it was a fairly easy decision that Jade would be our representative for tonight. Jade Sorry is the perfect candidate to win the I Can Do It Award for the AZ Council for Exceptional Children. She is a current fifth grader at Starline Elementary School, whose exuberance and success story is truly inspirational. She enrolled at her current school, Starline Elementary, as a kindergartner after attending preschool at Smoke Tree. With many academic and physical skills remaining a considerable challenge, Jade has always been happy, perseverant, and brought joy and friendship, inspiring many others. Jade has participated in an array of services that Arizona Public School Education has to offer. She continued in the fifth grade with an integrated experience. She's learned to speak up for what she needs, what she wants. She knows her own challenges. She works very hard to achieve her own academic goals with the support of her teachers and peers. She embodies the I Can Do It life with her desire to try, to learn, and to do. The confidence that she has developed through her academic learning, her loving family, includes performing in musical theater productions, in participating in Girl Scouts, in ballet, jazz, competitive gymnastics, piano lessons, voice lessons, and being in the Lake Havasou Singers Company. This girl's busier than I am. She loves swimming, camping, traveling with her family, reading, and hanging out with friends at school and in the community. She never says no to a challenge. She is always ready to go. Jade was actually the 2023 Amateur Athletic Union Twinkle Star National Champion, and moreover, she is kind, she is thoughtful, and she is a vision of what happens when the student, the family, the community, and the school work together effectively. There are many more words that I think I did write, actually. John edited me. That I could use to try to capture the essence of who Jade is, but if you could just see her smile and watch her live her life with joy and enthusiasm, you would know that words are no match for this vivacious young lady. Thank you for your time, and I also would be remiss if I did not say, students like this don't just land upon us. They come to us and are supported by our teachers, so I have to say thank you to Ms. Paling for all the work that she did to support Jade throughout her education. Thank you.
Next, we have Mrs. Mersing from Smoke Tree Elementary.
Hi, everybody. This is Ezekiel Vieramontes. Zeke began at our Smoke Tree Developmental Preschool as a young child. He and his support team, including teachers, family, administrators, worked very hard to ensure that his learning progressed. He became a leader in the classroom and was soon transitioned to another setting with some support as a third grader. By fourth grade, he had excelled and was transitioned again to a new setting. Since then, Zeke has consistently worked hard to achieve work his peers are doing. He has received multiple awards since transitioning into his new setting, including ABE Honor Roll, Top Mathematician, and Top Reader. When Zeke needs extra support, he communicates and lets the teachers know so he can make sure he completes each assignment. Zeke comes to school each day with a positive attitude and always tries his best. In fact, he went into his old classroom, this is a little side story, put his name on the board, Mr. Vieramontes, and began to teach the other students skip counting songs so they could multiply. Zeke, oh, sorry, lost my spot. We worked together to come up with a solution. Ah, I lost a spot there. Sorry about that. Even when Zeke is frustrated, with tears in his eyes, he will tell me, "I can do it." That's what his teacher says. Zeke then turns with a smile and says, "I'm a rock star." This I Can attitude has helped Zeke improve not only academically, but socially and emotionally. He is a kind young man. He gets along with his peers. He stands up for what's right. He is a leader, and he enjoys helping other students out. Zeke, I am incredibly proud to nominate you for this award, and I'm incredibly proud of how hard you work and how much you believe in yourself. Keep it up, buddy.
Thank you one more time for all the work you do behind the scenes for our staff in the room. Thank you for all the work you do day in, day out. Governing Board, thank you for the opportunity to recognize these outstanding students and families tonight, and have a great holiday. Thank you.
I'd like to just, once again, congratulate all the students in here. For those of you who, you know, don't want to stay for the boring part, feel free to leave. We'll take a moment if you guys want to leave, but I want to give everybody one more round of applause. So next up is Carol Noakowski from the Lake Havasou City Education Association.
There we go. Just a quick reminder that this time next month, we will be in legislative session, and hopefully, we will have a tentative plan for a education budget. So we'll be looking for that, and next month's report will be on that plan. So hopefully, everybody has a nice break. We are, this is the, I was thinking on the way here, that this week might be like the busiest, this next eight days that we have all year. So I'm hoping that everybody gets a time for rest and relaxation when they're, for their two weeks off. So thank you and enjoy.
Thank you, Carol. Do we have any call to the public? All right, there is no call to the public, so we will move to the consent agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I move we approve the consent agenda as presented.
And I'll second.
Kyle Niederman?
Yes.
Lisa Ramon?
Yes.
Aaron Karan?
Yes.
John Mastin?
Yes.
All right. Next up, we have a discussion item, 5.1, Student Achievement, State Testing.
So what we're pulling up is our annual data share, and when we talk about our data, there's loads and loads and loads that could take a very long time to share, but I wanted to show three big areas of academic data that helps define where we ended last year and helps us make decisions about where we're going. And so usually, we would start with state letter grades, but this year, I wanted to start with post-secondary feedback. And so the first time I shared this report was last year. This report is developed through the ASU Decision Center and the Helios Center, and this tracks all Arizona public high school students as they go on to public post-secondary institutions. So whether that be a four-year university or a community college, this really helps us track our post-secondary students. And so looking at this, I just wanted to show you, this is 2021, so this year is, this data is two years in the rear. I'll show you 2022 in just a second, just so you can see a quick comparison. So our 2021 graduates, we had 73 attending Arizona universities, so we could have others that attended out-of-state universities, private universities, went into the military. This is just looking at that group of students. But we can see from those students, 63% brought in Arizona Community College credits, and then we can see those state universities that they chose. And so 28 of those students chose ASU, 33 NAU, and 14 U of A. You can see their degree, their declared majors at that time. So this is, if you look, that declared major is spring of 2022, so this is looking at their second semester. What did they declare? And you can see a lot of Bachelor of Sciences, fewer Bachelor of Arts, and then you can see their GPAs. And so, yes.
Does anybody take computer classes?
There are computer classes, and we will talk about those specifically in just a second.
That's what my major is in.
Yes. So this is 2020, oh, I think that's the same month. This is 2022. And so again, 74 students attended Arizona universities. The previous year was 73. 47% brought in transfer credits. And then you can see this kind of shakeup. 22 students went to ASU, 50 students chose NAU, and four students chose U of A. So we really see this transition that's kind of happening as students are selecting potentially NAU. And again, lots of Bachelor of Science, Bachelor of Arts, those nursing students, and so thinking about the majors that they're choosing and then their GPA. So we can see that we have lots of students with 3.0 and above GPA. So again, that's just a snapshot. That is the most recent data that we have for universities. So now, we're going to look at university data in a different way. So this is a three-year total, and this looks at the success of LHUSD students in the red compared to Arizona statewide students in the blue, just at Arizona universities. And so you can see in pretty much every category, we're either doing better than the rest of the state, or we're very, very close. So these are just broad course areas. So you can see accounting, anthropology, astronomy, business, communication, early childhood. So again, we're on par or better than the rest of the state. The next is the rest of the alphabet, so health, history, journalism, justice studies, music. So again, students are doing very well. This is the most exciting slide, and to your point, John, the courses that are taking in computers, these are how we compare in the STEM field. So as we all know, STEM fields are what many students are preparing for. They're high-paying jobs, they're high-need jobs, and so we can see our students are doing better than the state. Aeronautics, biology, chemistry, we're tied with the state in computer science, computers, engineering, and we're doing better than the state in math and physics. So I think this is really impressive and really a kudos to our STEM teachers and really thinking about STEM starting all the way back in elementary school. And we'll see this when we go back to community colleges in just a second.
Just as a quick note, if anybody is watching out there or anybody here in the room, this presentation is available, so if you want to dig down and look at any specific one, go ahead.
Yes. So this is that same type of data, but looking at community college. You can see the three-year average is different. The Helios gets the data in different ways in different times, and so this is the most recent data. So the community college data, it goes through 2022. But again, so these are all of our students that are going to the community college compared to the rest of Arizona students that are going to the community college. This also includes dual enrollment students. So again, our students are doing very well. I think, you know, I'm a history major, but looking at those STEM fields, we see allied health. We know that that is a really important area, and our students are doing very well in that area. The rest of the alphabet, again, health, yay for history, justice studies, but thinking about what is offered at the community college level. This slide is CTE field. So this looks at students who are at the community college in CTE fields, earning certification. And so this does not look at private trade schools, but this is really the closest that we have to look at that. So we can see our students doing very well. Automotive, building construction, culinary arts, fire science, and then about the state average, welding. The vast majority of these students go to Mojave Community College, although this looks at all community colleges across the state. And then this is that STEM comparison. So these are our students who are taking STEM courses, whether those be dual enrollment courses or courses at Mojave Community College or at another community college. And so again, kudos really goes out to the strength of our STEM program and math and science teachers, especially in an area, an era where it is incredibly difficult to find qualified math and science teachers. So that's one end of the spectrum, and that spectrum is important, thinking, what do we want from the students who graduate from Lake Havasou High School? And that doesn't just happen in high school. It starts all the way back at the other end, looking at how are we supporting our students' learning to read? And so we're going to look at DIBELS data. DIBELS is the Dynamic Indicators of Basic Early Literacy Skills, and it is a series of short tests that look at students' ability to read, their early literacy skills, and their early reading scores. It also serves as a screener for dyslexia. So what is most compelling? This is the beginning of the year. So this assessment of DIBELS is given within three weeks of students coming to school. So this is the beginning of the year last year. The most alarming thing and should alarm every single person in this room is that very top box. In kindergarten, 70% of our students are coming well below benchmark. 70%. That is compared with 48%. That is the national average. And so DIBELS is a test that is given all across the nation in order to assess those early literacy skills. So we know that students are coming to us really not having strong early literacy skills. And so that doesn't mean that they can read. That is recognition of letter sounds. That is their ability to identify letters, their ability to recognize some basic words. And so really thinking about where our students are coming and what needs we have at the earliest levels to ensure that our students are reading by third grade. So thinking back, this is the beginning of the year. What I want you to note is the fourth grade and fifth grade, the only students we test our students on IAPs. We only test IAP students, so that is no longer our whole student body. It is just a smaller group of students. So now, we'll fast forward till the end of the year. So thinking, we give the DIBELS test three times a year. So this is going to be in April, April, May. So by the end of the year, we are down to 21% of our students in kindergarten being well below benchmark. And again, that should be lower, but that is a huge growth that can be attributed to really strong kindergarten teachers supporting those earliest literacy skills, the work of reading interventionists, and the support that students, the students get in school, supporting that early reading. So we can see that when we move to the beginning of the year or to the end of the year, we suddenly, if you look at our numbers compared to the students at benchmark and above benchmark, we have in kindergarten, 63% of our students at benchmark compared to the national average of 65. Remember, we came in at 70% below. Thinking about as we move forward in other grades, by the time we get to first grade, we are exceeding the nation in student scoring at benchmark and above benchmark. By the time we get to third grade, we have fewer students than the national average scoring well below benchmark. And so the takeaway here is... And so, the takeaway here is our teachers are really doing a great job with early literacy. The other takeaway is we still have students, as they're going into third grade, that are reading below grade level, and that is an area of focus and will continue to be an area of focus because we know if we want those students graduating and going on to college, third-grade reading and eighth-grade math are those big indicators. And so, that is, we're continuing to focus with science of reading instruction and supporting our early educators to be strong reading teachers. We have teachers going through very in-depth letters training. We also have preschool teachers and administrators going through that letters training as well to support science of reading. So that's the earliest. We had the graduates in the earliest. So now we're looking at state letter grade data, and so this is just digging in to how we receive our state letter grade. The state letter grade, you can move to the next slide. The vast majority of it looks at state testing. So proficiency, growth, subgroup improvement, those all look at the one-state test, AASIA, or the ACT, or potentially the AZPSY. It's, we're looking at one test point. So, not a collaborative group of tests, it's one test point. We also are looking at English learners on how they do on one test, and then at graduation. And so we'll dig into that in just a second. You can move forward. So this is elementary schools. This is how they get their state letter grade. Fifty percent of elementary school letter grade is on growth. The growth in individual students from one year to a next year on the one-state test. Proficiency is thirty percent, so it's looking at the number of students we have proficient. Again, one-state test. Ten percent of it is based on L, our English learning students, on their state test. And then there's ten percent that is made up of how our subgroups do. So we'll dig in. So one of the things to make sure that we understand, ninety-five percent of our students have to be tested, and that is no easy feat if you are a principal. Arizona mandates that all students test. However, there is a reality that sometimes parents don't want their student to test, and they keep their kids home from testing. And so, principals and teachers really do an excellent job. Jamaica had a hundred percent of their students test. So principals really do an excellent job ensuring that every single student tests. It also then breaks down, we need to make sure every single subgroup of student tests. A test does not count unless a student takes all parts of a test. So this in of itself is a huge feat, thinking about all these students testing. Okay, this is how you get your proficiency score. Minimally proficient students get zero points, partially proficient students get point-six points. A proficient student gets one point, and then highly proficient students get one-point-three points. So you want students who are highly proficient, but we do get partial points for partially proficient. So here's proficiency compared from two thousand and twenty-two to two thousand and twenty-three. We see that, for the most part, many of the schools made growth. Some of the schools who had strong proficiency in two thousand and twenty-two dropped a little bit, and that is another area of focus, is really ensuring those schools that have that high proficiency that we're continuing to move forward, we're continuing to help kids make growth and get to proficiency. Here's growth. So this looks at the progress that students make on a state achievement assessment. So this compares a student, their score in third grade to fourth grade to fifth grade to sixth grade. So we're looking at specific students and their growth. So if a student is a minimally proficient student, and the next year they become a highly proficient student, they get two points. So you get low growth, average growth, or high growth based on how many categories you grow in. This is really exciting. Remember, last year, some of our scores were lower than we wanted to see. We were in that first year of CKLA implementation. This is now the second year of CKLA implementation. And so we see that two schools got a perfect fifty for student growth. And so, really, thinking about the work, and Shannon is in the room, thinking about the work of dialing down to the individual student. How do we support each and every student so they're able to meet the statewide standards? And again, thinking about some of the schools that were at some pretty good proficiency, keeping that at top of mind. Every student matters and making sure that those students get to proficiency at grade level. This is our EL students. You can see that, for the most part, every school improved, every elementary school improved. We only get scored if there's ten students. So if you get ten students, it's worth ten percent. So that means if you're, and I don't know the exact number, if, most of these schools have somewhere between ten and twenty EL students, but it's ten percent of their overall letter grade. So it's very, very important to their letter grade. We've made some changes to EL programming, professional development, and family outreach. Havasu High just had an EL student family night, really making sure that those families know about how we support their students and how we can improve those students' English skills and ensure that they're learning at grade level. The next area is acceleration and readiness. It's kind of like potpourri. There's, you can get some points in a number of different areas as it relates to elementary school. It's third-grade minimally proficient. You want fewer kids minimally proficient in ELA in third grade. We know ELA, third-grade reading is really, really important. You can get two points for lowering your chronic absenteeism. I hear this a lot from parents sometimes. You only get paid if my kid comes to school. That's not actually true, unless they're gone for ten days, but it does show up on the letter grade. And so, it is important for students to learn that they're in school, that we really do see that the more students are in school, the better that they do in school. And then subgroup improvement, so ensuring that all of our students are doing well. So this breaks down special education students, Hispanic students, African-American students, white students. It breaks down all the subgroups of students, and you can earn points in those categories, too. And then special ed inclusion. So that's that our special education students are being served with their regular education peers. And so, many schools, they got all of their ten points, really breaking it down to the subgroup area, making sure that their overall proficiency might look good, but how are we really supporting every group of student? Bonus points, looks at special education enrollment and then science proficiency. And you can see the bonus points that the school's got. And then here is the overall letter grades for elementary school. And so, again, a lot of it looks at one-state test, but what the letter grades don't show is all of the work to really support students to make sure that those students are able to learn and perform the state-level standards. And again, as measured by one test, but we're really working to make that more streamlined for principals. So that's elementary school. Middle school looks very much the same as we go through it. The only difference is we're looking at eighth-grade math. So they tested ninety-eight percent of their kids. Proficiency, same thing, partially proficient, proficient, and highly proficient get some points. And we can see Thunderbolt really did make some nice, strong gains from two thousand and twenty-two to two thousand and twenty-three. They gained points in that area. Again, growth, moving students from lower proficiency areas in ELA in math to higher proficiency areas. And again, they made some nice, strong growth in that area as well. Thunderbolt did not have enough students to qualify for L, so they had an N count less than ten in two thousand and twenty-two. And this year, they earned five points. And then, again, the potpourri category, they earned all ten points. And so, again, thinking about that eighth-grade math and the importance of eighth-grade math, kudos to Thunderbolt, really making sure that fewer students are not at grade level by the time they get to eighth grade in the area of math. Bonus points, same thing, special education enrollment and proficiency on science, and they got two points. And so, Thunderbolt's letter grade is a B, and they really did show some nice, strong growth last year. Last but not least is the high school. The high school looks a little bit different because we suddenly have graduation figured into that. The high school tested ninety-four percent, and so really thinking about the importance at this level and then thinking about subgroups, making sure that every single student tests. And so that is an area of focus. Proficiency, and again, this thinks, this looks at proficiency on the ACT Aspire and then the ACT in eleventh grade. And so they improved their points for last year for proficiency. Subgroup improvement, so this category looks at subgroup proficiency, subgroup graduation, subgroup dropout to make up these points. There's, because of COVID and the change in tests, this will change next year, but this is what they used for this year. And the high school earned fourteen-point-three-two points. The last time we measured this way was two thousand and nineteen. And so there's, I think, another change coming to that category of points for the high school. L students is the same, and they earned all ten points for their students, making growth on the state assessment. Graduation rate is twenty percent. You get a certain number of points for students who graduate in four, or five, six, or seven years. The high school got all twenty points. They improved their graduation rate from the previous year, which in two thousand and twenty-two, it had dipped from two thousand and twenty-one, but they improved. So they got all twenty points. This category is really exciting. If you'll go one more category, you can earn points in all these different areas, but this is really, these are all tied to those post-secondary things that we want students to do. Completing a CTE sequence, getting a passing score on an AP test, taking an AP exam, completing the FAFSA, taking a college-level class, taking the ASVAB. So we're really looking in this area at things that prepare students for post-secondary, and this has been an area that the high school's been very, very focused on. They moved to fourteen points, and that shift is really positive and helped the high school get to what their overall letter grade is going to be. Here's their bonus points. There's bonus points in a couple of different areas, the ACT Aspire, special education enrollment, and science proficiency. And then we can see that they earned seven points. And really exciting, the high school, for the first time ever, earned an A. And so, again, letter grades, you can look at it, but what's behind that was a lot of work. And a lot of that work really is that shift in focus to being prepared for post-secondary outcomes. Just a little bit, you can see our historical letter grades. And so we've, as a whole, made gains every year, and we're really proud of those gains. And we continue to work to really support the students that are at the bottom of those letter grades. That's really what's important, rather than the letter grade itself. Any questions?
So, one thing that we talked about in our meetings was, just for kind of public awareness, to know that that growth category is something that's very important, and it's very hard to keep an A, because if your students have made growth, it's hard to show growth. So that's why I think you see a lot of bumping around between As and Bs, because, you know, you can't grow, and then you bump down to a B, and then you can grow. And so that's one thing I wanted to kind of mention along with that. Any discussion you all want to have?
I'm good.
Okay. I just want to mention a lot of work. I appreciate the transparency here. There is a lot of data. I'm a data guy, I love data. What I like is it's not just a data dump of, look, this. You talked about things we need to improve, things we're doing very well on. The, what we're doing with our students post-secondary, looking at, you know, in Arizona, very important to see how our students are doing compared to an aggregate population out there. So I really do appreciate the work, and I really like the direction that this shows that the district is going. But I also do like that there are plans for improvement as well.
I would agree with that. I mean, just like with the students' grades, it's easy to look at a letter on a piece of paper and not see, you know, is my student turning in more of their assignments or turning them in more on time? Is their grade better than it was last semester? You know, those types of things are really important. It's easy to just look at a snapshot and think that that tells a story. So I appreciate all the background information that you gave. And I also think that it's important for parents to consider, even if you go to a school that received a B or a C, I think if you asked a lot of the parents how they feel about their students' classroom, their students' teachers, what their student is actually learning, I think a lot of parents would say that their student is getting an A experience, regardless of what the school might have received. So I think it's important to keep kind of a well-rounded point of view on this. But thank you, Jamie.
That was all good information, Jamie.
Thank you.
All right, we'll move on to the action items. Six-point-one Student Achievement, Lake Havasu High School, Havasu Online New Courses for two thousand and twenty-four, twenty-five school year.
Lake Havasu High School is proposing to add the following classes to their course catalog for the two thousand and twenty-four, twenty-five school year. American Sign Language one, two, and three, four. This course is currently being taught through school's PLP. Based on instructor qualifications and availability, LHHS would like to offer the class on campus. This class will provide an option for students seeking two years of a world language for university admissions and add elective offerings to the LHHS campus. Materials are currently being reviewed as part of the world language adoption and will be purchased with district funds. General Music. This is a one-semester elective that will provide students the opportunity to explore different types of music, develop an understanding of music theory, and participate in informal music performances. This class will serve as an option for students seeking a fine arts credit required for some university admissions and add elective offerings to the LHHS campus. Materials are currently being reviewed as special area teachers, art, music, and PE review curriculum maps. Native materials may be purchased with district and/or grant funds. Marine Science. This course will focus on the earth's ocean, lakes, and rivers as students explore marine organisms, conditions, and ecology. This course will serve as an elective for students. Text materials will be purchased using district funds, and ongoing lab costs will be purchased using funds appropriated to LHHS for lab needs. Fundamentals of Business one, two. This course will move from one semester to one year. Adding a second semester will give students time to explore the topics of credit, wealth-building and investing, insurance and marketing. This change will allow students to be considered CTE completers after year two. Students may continue this pathway and choose to take additional DE business offerings. No additional funds are required. Approved courses will be added to the course catalog and may be offered pending student interest and master scheduling needs.
Discussion or motion?
I move that we approve six-point-one as presented.
I'll second. I do have a couple of questions, though. For the Fundamentals of Business, will, is that class going to be a prerequisite for other business classes the student wants to take?
Yes.
And then, American Sign Language is, are we sure that that fulfills a foreign language requirement for universities?
In the state of Arizona, it does.
Okay. I didn't really have any other questions, but I am excited about all of these courses. I think, especially in our electives content, it's exciting because a lot of our electives are taught by teachers who, they're not just teaching out a book. They have specific life experience in those fields. And so I'm excited to be able to kind of expand what we're offering to students.
I kind of echo a little bit of what Ms. Ramon is saying. This is all about options for our students, and I know we have some passionate teachers who are wanting to teach these courses and are going to do an outstanding job. So- So I am excited for these opportunities.
Yes.
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 6.2, Business Services, Architect Services, Oro Grande Classical Academy, Roof and Weatherization Design.
Governing Board Members, the school district submitted a grant application to the Division of School Facilities seeking funding to perform a roof and weatherization assessment at Oro Grande Classical Academy. The DSF approved the application, providing funding and the assessments were performed. The results of the assessments determine the condition of the roof and the weatherization factor for the exterior of the building to be in need of repair or replacement. As a result of the assessments, DSF recently approved additional funding for design work to be performed as the preparatory stage for creating drawings and plans to be used, should the DSF approve funding for construction. Once the design is complete, the project will go back to the DSF for them to consider funding the construction phase of the project. Should the DSF approve funding, the project will come back before the governing board to approve construction. The awarded design amount is $135,345, and EMC 2 will be procured through the SAVE contract.
Discussions or motion?
I move that we approve 6.2 as presented.
I'll second.
Wait, wait, just a second. Just wanting to just do a, a little bit of information. Once again, the money is coming from the DSF, right?
Correct.
I always like to really point that out, that you guys are doing your job procuring outside funding for these projects when allowable, so.
Correct.
I just wanted to say that.
Kyle Miederman?
Yes.
Lisa Ramon?
Yes.
Eric Ferron?
Yes.
Yes.
Next up, 6.3, Business Services, Budget Revision.
Thank you, Governing Board Members. Per ARS 15-905, if the governing board receives notification that the budget exceeds the general budget limit, or the unrestricted capital budget limit by 1% of the general budget limit, it shall adopt on or before December 15th a revised budget for the current year, which shall not exceed the general budget limit or the unrestricted capital budget limit. The revised 2023-24 budget, or budget revision number one, includes financial adjustments to the overall budget limit based on, based upon funding changes that have occurred since the adoption of the annual budget last July. The hearing notification and summary documents were posted on the Arizona Department of Education and district websites on December 2nd for public review prior to the December 12th board meeting. I do have a presentation for that. So budget revision, as I stated in statute, when we receive a letter from the state, we receive a letter typically after the annual financial report is submitted in October, and then that, that letter goes to the governing board, which will reflect whether or not we've exceeded the 1% of the general budget limit or not. And in this case, we have, we have exceeded the 1% allowance by just over $2 million. These dollar amounts make it a little bit challenging as far as budgeting for our annual budgets ever since current year funding came, came to be. All of the other budgets, or the budget capacities that are figured on prior year budgets were within a couple thousand dollars, when you're looking at millions of dollars in budget capacity. But in this case, the overall general budget limit for maintenance and operations were exceeded by just over $2.2 million. On this presentation, however, I'll note that this letter was a revised letter from the state, which reflects that it's just over $2 million. However, the challenge with this, at the state level, there's been a lot of turnover. So the letters that were received and the backup supporting documents from the state that they provide on a monthly basis have not been, you, they haven't coordinated, that you haven't been able, you weren't able to tie out the letter with the actual reports received from the state, whereas we used to be able to do that in years past. So what I'm doing in this budget revision, I'm going to revise to the BSA, or the Budget 25 report that we received back in October. That aligned with the original letter that we were sent, and that districts were sent prior to the state actually sending out a revised letter. So I'm gonna, I'm going to revise more conservatively, because I can tie those numbers out. And as I mentioned, as I was in communication with the state, as well as other districts, and even our audit consultant, districts across the state are having the same issues. They haven't been able to tie out to the penny with the reports that we're receiving, as there's a timing issue at the moment coming from the state. So the revised budget looks at reports that are given to us from the state. It focuses on average daily membership. This is budget revision number one, and then the financial transparency, this is all part of this presentation that I'm giving tonight. The reports are shown, the Budget 25 is on the left-hand side and the right-hand side. The left-hand side is the Budget 25 report on the M&amp;O side of that report, and then the report on the right side of the screen with the yellow ribbon across it, that's the capital side of the Budget 25 report. And then the BSA 55-1 is the image down at the bottom of that screen, and we'll see bigger versions of that as we go through the presentation. So a big part of budget revision, as I've said many times before, in budget preparations, proposed budgets, adopted budgets, and even in the revision process, when I present to you, our money is given to us, the major part of our, of our funding is generated off ADM, the number of students who are enrolled in our schools. And that's the process that I'll take you through tonight, just so you can see where I tie out to the state and the impact that that has on our overall budget limit. This slide shows our BSA 55-1 numbers down on the bottom-left corner. That's a snippet of the actual report, of a section of the report. These are the numbers that are sent to the state through our school management system. Then ADE reviews that, they perform their own calculations, and then we reconcile to the state. The top graphic there in the center, that's the part of the data entry tab that we use to populate the budget sheets and then send them to the state. If you'll notice in the top right, in the green section, you can see historical data for fiscal year '22 and fiscal year '23. You can see our average daily membership numbers in those two fiscal years. So in '22, we were at 5,094 students, and then last year, 5,107 students. And then in the red section down at the bottom of that graphic, bottom-right corner, you can see that we are, we have decreased in student enrollment to 4,871 students as of this October report. That's a total of roughly 237 students that we've decreased from budget adoption back in July to current. And that's what we're, that's why we are, need to revise, so that we can get our budget capacity in line with the state, as it's reflective of average daily membership currently in the district. The next slide shows more of a detailed view of our subgroups and student categories for our Group B students that require special services or qualify for special services. That's that graphic in the top section of the slide. You note, you'll note I have the yellow arrows there, and the highlights in the bottom-left section of, of the slide, you can see where I put timing of the letter that I referred to right at the beginning of the presentation versus our data that's being sent to the state, and then the state in turn populating our BSA report and keeping us updated as to what they're seeing as far as our ADM and other numbers that we project to the state. The K3 reading at the top of that graphic and gifted, they're not reflected in the overall report because of timing. Again, there's a timing issue between the letter that's generated to us, and then the actual reporting of data on the state side. So K3 reading, that number is non-existent. You can see it's all zeros. When I revise in May, May 15th, by May 15th, there's a mandatory revision for all districts. That number will be populated. We actually have that number now on the most recent report, but it wasn't here in time for that letter and this budget revision. So that number is already in place. So we will recover some students in our ADM counts when that number is, is put in place. Gifted, it is there, that number is there as a placeholder. However, that number is not finalized yet at the, even currently, at this particular moment, it's still not showing on our state reports. And that, that has happened for multiple years. We usually don't see any type of finalizing of that number until well into the school year. So by the time I revise back in May, that number will be finalized as well. Hopefully, that number will still be favorable to the district to allow us to recover some ADM. The budget revision process, again reconciling to the Department of Ed. Here's a little bit more of a blown-up view of that Budget 25. You notice the red checkmarks. As the state shows us as a district what they're reporting, my job is to reconcile to those numbers, to make our numbers align with their numbers, so that our general budget limit is aligned to what the state is actually showing for their numbers. Sometimes they're wrong, and sometimes we have to get in touch with them and, and petition our, our case because of maybe an upload issue with student counts. Most of the time, they're pretty accurate. The uploads typically go pretty smooth. We've had a couple hiccups over, over the last few months with uploading student information to the state, but all that tends to get ironed out as we move into the school year. The beginning of the school year is always a little challenging, as we have students coming in and out and transferring grade levels, so the beginning of the year is a little bit more challenging. But so far, we're, we see no big issues as far as being, being in line with what the state is showing for their data. So taking that BSA report and that Budget 25 report, this is page seven of the actual budget spreadsheet, and here's where we start to plug in those numbers as you saw on the slide previously in that Budget 25 with all those red checkmarks. So that top, that top number of $34,010,0264 in column A for Maintenance and Operations, that's our new revenue control limit, as we reflect the 237 students roughly, that loss of 237 students since the beginning of the school year or over the summer. 1.7 million is our revised override figure. That number was actually pretty, pretty spot-on. I think it was only about $4,000 off between what we projected in July to current. 18 million is our budget balance carryforward. That number will decrease when I come back before you in May for the budget revision, because we've talked about how we are eating away at budget balance carryforward. So that number will actually go down to the seven, in the 17 million range as we, as I revise in May. We just received information on that number. It's roughly $800,000 lower. But again, we knew that was going to happen. That's why we had a budget cap, a balance carryforward, so that we can withstand any type of challenge that comes before us. So $800,000 off of an $18 million figure, we're, we're doing pretty, pretty well. And then that number, as I, as I bring back to your remembrance, that as we have gone to a more aggressive salary schedule this year, we'll continue to see that number in the years to come go down probably even more, more aggressively than an $800,000 reduction. The additional funding for Prop 123, $357,000, I think it was $1,000 off on that one. $1,425 for that one-time state aid, that number just came through just a week or so ago, before this revision actually had to be published, and I think I was off, I think we actually recover about $4,000 on that, so it's, we'll, we'll get about 1.4, just under $1,430,000 on that one-time state aid that was given last legislative session. You can see at the bottom there in the red circle, that's our new budget, budget limit of $55,732. And then on this next slide, go back one more, there you go. That's the M&amp;O slide for, that shows everything, that general budget limit down on the bottom-right corner. This is the same sheet that we see when I do the budget adoption, the proposed and the adopted budget. So all of our budgeted expenditures, expenditures and all the different function and object codes tie out to that bottom, that number on the bottom-right corner. That's how we know we are in alignment with the state, and that our budget capacity definitely does reconcile to the state. That's what we want to see. We don't want to see a variance of any kind in that message down on the bottom-right corner. This is the capital section, page two of that Budget 25 report. You can see the three red checkmarks, those, that's what I use to reconcile again to the state on the next slide, which is page eight of the actual spreadsheet for the budget. And the arrows there, 6.7 million, and then the 3,620, are tied out to that Budget 25 report, which gives us a total of about $9.8 million in capital money that's currently available to us in our capital fund. As noted, as I mentioned before, the final budget revision, which typically will be budget revision number two, unless there's a need to do a, a number two in between now and May, which I don't see the, I don't expect there to be a need for that. We will reconcile for the last time with the state, due by May 15th. And then by way of financial transparency, as always, the last slide, this is where individuals can locate the budget works, the worksheets, as well as presentations, and a link to the actual state of Arizona to view all reports, not just for our district, but for any district. You can find that information on our website. There's a graphic there to just show you where to point and click to find that information.
It's on our website, that's good.
It is. It's on our website and the state of Arizona's website.
Discussion or motion?
I move that we accept 6.3 as presented.
I'll second. I do want to ask a clarifying question. So when you talk about a drop in enrollment of 237 students, we're talking about weighted, correct?
That's actual bodies.
Those are actual, okay.
Yeah, we have, we have roughly four that we lost at the preschool level, 163 kindergarten through eighth grade, and 79 through 12. So when you weighted, it came out to be almost 300 students, the equivalent of 300 students.
Thank you.
As, as kind of mentioned, but that's kind of that 208 that they are not counting for the gifted, that would come back in as the weighted students.
So the 208, that's actual bodies, but when they weight that, they only weighed it like .04, so we're only talking like a handful of kids. So it's not actually that we're going to recover 208 kids. The weighted is, is literally a handful of kids in that regard.
Yes.
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 Moving on, 6.4, Business Services, vouchers, student activity funds, and auxiliary funds.
Governing Board Members, approval for vouchers, student activity, and auxiliary funds for November 2023 are in front of you tonight.
Motion or discussion?
I move that we accept it as presented.
I'll second.
Yes.
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 Informational Superintendent.
Thank you, Board Members. First, I want to congratulate our students that we're here tonight to accept their
First, I want to congratulate our students that we're here tonight to accept their award. It just shows that we have amazing kids doing great things and we try to see that every month here, but so excited to recognize them for the things that they are accomplishing at their schools. I also want to share the Student Achievements Report tonight. I appreciate all of that data as well, but it also showed positive growth at all levels of our district, elementary, middle, and high school. And they're really focused on the work and the data that is required to figure out where we are and where we need to go. The Student Achievement Team and the coaches started by presenting a lot of that data. Our principals have worked really hard to dig in at their particular schools and go back and present it to their staff. And then they're also doing a lot of work with their staff to meet with them, to make sure they know what data to look at, how to look at it, how it drills down to every single student and what they need and the data required to move them forward. So I just want to thank them for all of that work. And also to thank you to our business department because a lot of work goes into ensuring that we are transparent about the money we have and how we are spending it and, and using it to the good of our students. So I just appreciate all of that and I hope everyone has a wonderful winter break and holiday.
Governing Board? I'll just do a quick reminder that while it seems like everybody is on break, a lot of people are not in education. There's coaches out there who are taking teams to tournaments. There's teachers doing professional development, all sorts of things. So, you know, I want to thank them for doing that and I also want to wish everybody a Happy New Year. Do we have another call to the public? Board Suggestions for Future Agenda Items?
Are we in session next week?
In the school?
No, no, for us at the board.
We do not have a board meeting.
Good.
Any press media clarifying questions? All right, then I'll take a motion to adjourn.
I move we adjourn.
I'll second.
Kyle Miederman? Lisa Ramon?
Yes.
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 We're adjourned.